I appreciate it.
All right, good evening.
Thank you.
The time being 7:03 on January 27, 2020. A quorum of the planning board being present. Call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda, approval of minutes for January 6, 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of January 6, 2020.
That's written. A motion made. Do I have a second? Motion made in second. It all's in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Also, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of January 13, 2020.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. It all's in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Take care of the minutes. All right, moving on to Agenda Item B. Agenda Item B1, Committee Reports. Do any of the members have any committee reports they'd like to make at this time? All right, seeing none. Move on to Agenda Item B2. B2 is parking discussion for 20 Carter Street. Having spoken to the office earlier today, I know there isn't anybody going to be here this evening. My more pressing concern is that the answer, I think, that the office got was that the, we'll call him the ultimate owner, the person who apparently is in Florida, said they'd be able to come in in April, which I'm not really thrilled with. You know, I'm not waiting for them to finish sunning themselves and fly back north for the spring. It's not really conducive to getting this resolved. I think I'd like to have us send a letter out to them saying we would like them to instruct whoever it is that's on site dealing with the day-to-day to please discuss this with us. In the meantime, rather than waiting three months and for the entire hockey season to end before somebody gets run over in the parking lot. I mean, I've taken video, I've taken pictures. I've asked to have those forwarded. It's getting dangerous because people are parking where they're not supposed to, but they may not know it because the lines are confused as to what you can see and what you can't see. There's a lot of credo parking that's going on at the end of the aisles to the point where they're so far into the drive lane that after some people leave, you'll have these cars that look like an island sitting right in the middle of where you'd normally drive. It's definitely becoming concerning. And when the kids walk out of there, I mean, you know, the adults and the older kids are not probably the problem. But when the smaller kids are coming out dragging their bags behind them and there are way too many cars in places they shouldn't be, you know, people can't see. You know, and I think having someone who's dealing with the day-to-day, someone is running that rink. Someone is here.
I have a question. Why, and you know the answer because you and I were both doing this at the same time. When I was at hockey games there with you and we would find something wrong, we always went to someone and they took care of it. We always went to someone and they took care of it, whether it was that day or we got a phone call from Kevin?
Might be. And that's, I guess, what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, right.
Who's the person right now to talk to that's...
So if we could do it before, why can't we do it now?
I agree. So if everybody's all right with that, I'd like to have a letter sent or an email, whatever it is, to the owner and say that we don't plan on waiting around till April to discuss this, that we want someone from the day-to-day operations to get in touch with us so we can explain the concern we have on the parking.
Mr. Chairman, I agree 100% with what you're talking about. And we have teams coming in from other towns to use their skating rink for games, and it's crowded. You know that, well, I know that. Tuxbury draws a lot of hockey people, Andover draws a lot of hockey people, and they come to that facility and it's not in working order the way it should be. And we've been putting up with this for a long, long time. It's time to him to get somebody in here. I agree 100%. So...
All right, Mr. Delaney, you're all right with it?
I'm fine with it.
All right, so we'll reach out to them, see if we can't move this along a little quicker.
Could we even address in the letter, enter if you would, the fact that we used to be able to talk to someone and they would take care of it expeditiously? So it's not like we only need him.
I mean, I don't know if he's just getting confused because he's cobbling this together with the bond request. I don't know. But, you know, I'm not really sure even if he came in exactly what he's going to do other than talk to the person on site. So we could cut out the middleman, yeah, and try to address this, you know, within the next weeks as opposed to several months. Because by spring, you know, there's hockey going on there, but not like it is now. So... All right, so that's that. Moving on to Agenda Item B3, Planning Board Fee Recommendations. This is if anyone has any comments, basically. Okay. So did anybody have any comments on the parking fees that they wanted to make at this time?
Well, I was a little confused by a couple of things. It's not that hard sometimes. On the sheet that had columns for Tuxbury, Andover, Billricka, Drakeett, Lowell, and Wilmington, when you went down our column as an example, down, if you go to modifications...
Yeah, me too. Oh, I'm sorry. I was talking to myself.
Oh. If you go down the modification...
It's just happening all along with the normal.
It says 550 for modification with decision changes. But then when you get to reduction and change in parking, which is the minimum item, change in parking lot design, nothing. Modification to the special permit, that could be substantial. There's nothing there. I was wondering why.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? Which location?
Under modifications. There's only a figure next to the first item. No figures to the other three.
Because they don't have them for those towns. They don't require a modification, don't have a fee for them.
Andover does.
Are you talking about, so Drakeett, Lowell, and Wilmington are blank because they don't have a fee?
I'll say it again, Andover does.
So we're in, okay, so we're in modifications, and you're in the first line, modifications, and under Tuxbury, 550, Andover, 500, Billricka, 250, and then the others are blank, correct?
Yep.
Okay, and your question is?
Why is there no figure?
So the other three towns don't charge one, we charge 550?
For the first one?
Right.
And 250 for Billricka? No, we have no figures for Drakeett, Lowell, and Wilmington either.
They don't charge one?
Yeah, right. I don't know what that means. I understand that. My question is, why would we charge in one and nothing on the other?
The ones below. Oh, I see, okay. So he doesn't mean these three, he means these three.
Oh, okay.
So going down, they charge 5, 5, 5. We're nothing and everybody else is nothing.
We don't charge those categories below it. That's something that if you guys want to implement, you could, but...
It doesn't have to be the 550 figure either. It could be something else if it's...
I came into this and you guys already have your fees. So I can't speak to the rationale why you guys in the past have implemented certain fees, Mr. Chairman.
I think, I mean, in looking at it, I think, I mean, not with absolute, but it appears from when I looked at it that Andover is the one who seems to charge for everything. We seem more consistent with the other four in most cases. But, you know, as Anna mentioned before, if we want to add one to any of these, actually, there's no justification for why we do or don't. It's really just a choice. If we want to add any to any of them, we can, but it's completely up to us.
Let me go down one more section. Senior housing. We don't charge for long-term care, assisted living, congregate care, independent living. Senior residential community, we don't charge. Whereas, sure, Andover's the only one that does, but Andover charges $500 for the blanket permit and $100 more a unit.
Right.
Every one of these is filed in Richard's permit where we do charge, right?
The site plans, special permit typically, or special permit.
Right, so we are charging, we're just charging it up here.
Yeah, it's under special permit typically.
So in ours, it's just, it would just be charged under the special permit at the top? Because they're all special permits. So we're charging the 500, just we don't categorize it out into those lines? It's not a separate fee, is what I mean, like they're breaking it up.
If someone would have picked this up and said, okay, what's the fee going to be for site plan special? What's the fee going to be for site plan base fee? There's nothing in there. Or is this just for us?
It's just for you guys to have a comparison.
Well, that still doesn't tell me... I don't know every fee that we charge. So if I see nothing, I've got to have to ask, do we charge for that?
Well, no, I think in some of these cases, it's just that they're using multiple terms for the same thing. We don't do that.
Okay, what do we charge for site plan base fee?
It's 550.
550, oh, 550, sure.
And site plan, and all of the others in that column?
All those fall under that.
Yes, that's correct, so...
So...
I'm on the low side.
All those categories for us are 550.
Okay.
It's just not written in that column because they're not treated differently than any other site plan.
We don't charge for waivers?
Which one do you want now?
Under waivers.
Waivers, yeah.
Yeah, we don't charge for that.
Okay. Well, no one does.
But we don't charge for, I guess, special permit extension. We don't charge for that right now. But my recommendation memo, Mr. Chairman, lists out recommendations.
Yep. Right?
Yeah, so there was three new fees, Mr. Chairman, of the recommendations to add in, and then for the family suite was to reduce it from 550 to 350. And then we break down the amount that goes to our GIS service for the mapping, and then what just goes to a general fund. And that's for each different fee, it's a different breakdown.
I'm a registered marijuana.
So, I mean, we're free to change these. I mean, this is just, this is our initial one, you know, if something comes up, we can amend it. But for now, the fees that appear with the recommendations that we have this evening, do you have any, on the four recommendations, are you all right with those?
Yeah.
For tonight, okay. Mr. Delaney?
All right, I'll go on with all the recommendations.
Okay. Any other comments on them? Mr. Fattalia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Anna, these were your recommendations, is that what I understand? Okay, these reductions and so forth, so...
The office and I worked together on developing that, so...
Okay, so...
But it's just a family...
Just for the record, I think I was the one who was questioning the fees to make sure they're comparable with other towns. So we're not undercharging and not overcharging. I mean, we all know that we can use the revenue in town, and if we are right online with other towns as far as the fees, then I'm okay with it. But if we're not charging for certain fees, then I want them in place because other towns are charging for them and we aren't, so... And I don't have my sheet with me tonight, I'm sorry, but there was a number of highlighted ones that we were not charging for. But that's why I put it on Anna to look at. I had highlighted a bunch of them, like this whole, like I said, Mr. Falleson, this whole side is all blank for us not charging anything from after modifications all the way down. So, but if we're good with it now, I'm okay with what we have now, and then maybe we could review it later on, but so...
All right, so I'm all set with the ones that are recommended. Can we do these all as one, just as submitted? All right. So can I have a motion to accept the recommendation fee schedule as submitted this evening, including the breakdowns of the fees as submitted?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. So that takes care of the fees for now. All right, moving on to Agenda Item B4, Andover Street River Road Intersection Discussion. Do we have anybody here for that this evening? If you just state your name for the record, the floor will be yours.
Andrew Stack, Tuxbury DPW...
Michael, there you go. Thank you.
Andrew Stack, Tuxbury DPW Engineering Division. So what I submitted to you was a packet for the Andover Street River Road Intersection Improvement Project. It's basically provided to the planning board for information purposes. We are altering a public way as part of the project. So as a result, we have to provide it to the planning board based on Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81i. The right-of-way changes that we're doing are being done through permanent easements, and we're going through that right-of-way process right now with the Board of Selectment. The packet has plans of those easements that are part of this project. The project's a joint effort between the town of Tuxbury, the city of Lowell, Mass DOT, and our consulting design engineer, TEC. The project's undergone a multi-year design process, and we've just completed the final plans, specifications, and estimates, and they've been submitted to Mass DOT. In general, the project involves signalizing the intersection of Andover Street and River Road, reconstruction of the Andover Street River Road intersection. We're providing dedicated vehicle turning lanes, new sidewalks. We have 1,000, approximately 1,035 linear feet of new sidewalks, reconstruction of approximately 11,000 linear feet of new side... Excuse me, reconstruction of 1,100 linear feet of sidewalks, and providing new bicycle lanes, relocating crosswalks to the actual intersection rather than having mid-block crosswalks, and just a general overall improvement of safety due to the signalization. As far as changes altering of the public way, the biggest change is basically at the corner where the mobile station is at that Andover Street River Road intersection. We're pulling in the roadway a little bit and the sidewalk to make it less of a sharp turn if you're heading from, I guess that would be from the east, turning right onto River Road. With the signalization, we'll hopefully be encouraging greater utilization of that intersection and cut down on the cut-through traffic through Fisk and Trall Road as a result. That's the gist of the submission. There's no action that's needed by the planning board. The planning board can provide recommendations if it so desires. That's all I have.
All right, just before I open it up to the board members, are there any, just bullet pointed, are there any specific reasons that led to the reason for doing this?
For this?
Beyond just general, I mean, it's a high accident area? Like those kind of things that generated the reason for making the change?
I was not on board when this project started, so I honestly don't know the, what the initial, initially caused the development of this project. But I am sure accidents is one of the biggest reasons.
I am too, I just figured if you did know, I was going to just have you, so it was on the record, but that's fine.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Falleson?
Well, you're going to love me then. First question. Do you know when this was last changed?
The plan was changed on January 8, I believe, was when it was...
No, physically changed on the ground.
When the intersection was changed?
Yeah.
I have no idea. It was probably, I know that we redid that intersection probably, I want to say about 10 years ago. They did some channelization where they did those little raised rubble strips on the River Road side. But that's the only changes that I'm really aware of. But I've only been working for the town for a couple of years, so...
Well, I thought it was three or four years ago, but I know it created a little bit of a havoc, especially in the strip mall, you know, when you're coming out of...
910 Andover Street?
River Road.
Yeah.
At the end, the strip mall on the right.
Yeah.
When you're in there, people have had a tendency not to see the driveway, and they wind up driving right over the berm. I've seen them do it. And it's because there's really no delineation between asphalt to asphalt to asphalt.
Well, that'll be definitely improved as part of this project because we're going to have granite curbing installed, so...
Okay. Well, that'll mean they'll get a flat.
Well, you should be able to see it though, now.
But who paid for it the last time there was a modification change?
You talk about the rubble strips in the sidewalk?
Yeah, yeah.
I believe it was the town.
And who's going to pay for this?
This is federally funded.
Oh, good. Okay, well, that's a good answer. The one thing I couldn't see on this plan is where the driveway is for that, off of River Road, the driveway is for that strip mall.
On the River Road side?
Yes.
It's basically in the same area that it's presently located.
I can see the driveway for, off Andover Street. I can't see a driveway on...
Yeah, these plans are basically just more or less right-of-way plans. It's not, it's not construction plans.
Is the sidewalk going to be on both sides or one side?
The sidewalks are on both sides, basically throughout the limits of the project on River Road and Andover Street.
That's good. And a full set of lights, right?
Yes.
Okay. Will that control the driveway coming out of Walgreens?
Yes, the driveway to Walgreens is going to be reconfigured.
Okay, good. I'm all set for now, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Fattalia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So one of my questions was funding. So would we no cost at Tuxbury at all?
There is some costs, but the majority of the project is federally funded.
Okay. Any idea when it's going to begin?
So the project is slated to be advertised for bid on February 29 of this year. It is a Mass DOT project, so their bidding timeline is a lot longer than, say, just the town project. So probably around sometime this summer, they'll have a contract. They'll accept bids, and then they'll pick a contractor. And possibly late this year, they may start construction. More realistically, it's probably next year would be when it would start.
So does this always come in front of us, like plans for...
Attorneys of rule suggested that I submit it to you, to the planning board. So if there is an alteration of a right-of-way, that the planning board should be sent a copy of the plan.
So I know you're involved in this work with the town, but were you involved in the Maple Street development and all that?
I was not.
Off, you know, okay. How about Chandler and East?
I was not.
Okay. There were a number of complaints about the Chandler and East Street. You know, right turn being very sharp now.
Yeah.
It's still not completed. So, I mean, it seems like they made it smaller, and they put the sidewalk in there for the bus cut out there and, you know, granite curbing and so forth. And, but it seems very tight going from East down to Chandler, taking a right, and coming up Chandler, take a right on East, even with the lights there. So I thought that maybe that would have been done a little bit better or wider, but...
We won't have any issues like that at this intersection?
Right, I understand. So, because we did have problems at Maple Street as well when that was done a year or so ago. I think somebody got hurt there pretty well, I think, so, but just curious. I mean, because I don't remember seeing any plans in front of us for that, those two sites at all. But maybe they did, but so... All set, we welcome this change, and hopefully it won't cost us too much money. Thank you.
Mr. Delaney?
I think my question would answer that. I was concerned about the sidewalks. Is that the entrance into the strip mall from River Road? The sidewalks will go on that side of the River Road?
It's on both, yeah. It'll wrap all the way around that in front of 910 Andover Street where that little strip mall is.
But also in front of the mobiles?
Yes. So Mobile currently has a sidewalk that wraps all the way around there, and that'll continue.
Does that go down beyond the mobile gas station on Andover Street?
On River Road, you mean, or on...
On River Road. The sidewalks are on River Road to the other thing, but the sidewalks...
It'll...
Andover Street going by the mobile station?
Yeah, on Andover Street, it'll continue up towards Andover, and it'll stop where the project limit ends, which is around where the Lowell Assembly of God Church is.
Okay.
And that's basically where it ends, on both sides of the street.
All right. Yeah, I have nothing on the project, other than, you know, the sooner it gets done, the better in terms of safety, obviously. I mean, lights will make a big difference, I think, with the, you know, the cars kind of coming in every direction there, trying to get across, especially when it's busy. The only thing, and this is not so much for you, I'm just going to say it to the board members and then have it trickle out to whoever it would be, but much like the mobile, actually, I don't know what gas station is, but the one we have on East Street slash Daskum, right, when you're coming into Tuxbury, you have one of the Welcome to Tuxbury on that corner. I wouldn't be opposed to us seeing, since we're taking that corner piece, is that right? Were you making that turn?
It's just being pushed back a little slightly. It's not going to be a drastic change.
But we're taking it though, right?
Yes, it's, well, taking it through in order of taking of a permanent easement.
Right, so what I'm saying is, but we have that space now, where that corner is.
Well, no, that's going to be the roadway.
Right, but aren't we taking beyond?
For the sidewalk.
And that's the cutoff right there, the sidewalk?
Yeah, basically.
Never mind, that's fine. Okay. Otherwise, I'm all set. So again, this was just informational, so no vote needed by us.
Yeah, if the board so desires, they can provide recommendations, or you don't have to do anything.
All right, very good. Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, moving on to Agenda Item B5, A&amp;R 74 Adams Road.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, board members. To Kukow, Woodland Design. We have an A&amp;R plan before you this evening. Property up there is a little bit short of two acres, and there's an existing dwelling on number 74. So the owner wishes to subdivide that property off and then retain ownership to the area, which is Lot 2. Lot 2 has plenty of frontage and it meets the perimeter ratio, but it's shy of the acre. So it's just similar to what we did on 275 Marshall Street, where we came in, subdivided off a conforming lot, and then gives us the opportunity in the future to go to the Board of Appeals.
Mr. Delaney?
You're planning on subdividing Lot 1?
No, right now, it's all one big lot.
Yeah.
So Lot 1 will become a conforming lot, and we could sell that with the house. The other lot just stays as a parcel of land that's not buildable at this time.
Okay, and Lot 2 is going to be, that's a buildable lot then?
No, Lot 2 is the non-buildable lot. Lot 1 is the buildable lot.
Okay, I'm all set.
Mr. Fattalia?
Yeah, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make sure for the record that we know that Lot 2 was not a conforming lot and not buildable as far as not being an acre, has the frontage but not the square footage.
Yeah, I put it in the notes and on the lot itself, so it's on the plan twice, so it's pretty clear.
So I'm all set with it, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Falleson?
I'm all set.
All right, the chair is all set as well. We have the plan here, correct? That's behind me. All right, so then before we leave tonight, everybody please endorse the plan, provided we prove it in a second. So with that, do we have a motion on the A&amp;R for 74 Adams Road?
Motion to endorse the plan.
All right, a motion to endorse in a second. Motion made in second, it all's in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To Kukow, is this the one there?
Yes.
Moving on to Agenda Item B6, Bond Release 743 Main Street, Tuxbury Village. Moving on to agenda item B6, barn release 743 Main Street, Tewksbury Village.
Good evening. Prophet Pondelli, Tewksbury Village Condominiums. We're looking for a final barn release to 743 Main Street. I'm here to ask any questions you might have.
All right.
Mr. Patelha.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. After reviewing the paperwork and so forth and it seemed like they have the problem resolved with the snow, the snow that was there, right? The snow storage issue was resolved, right?
Yes. The management company followed through on it.
Clearing it out and so they won't, it won't happen again and so forth, right? So, great. I also seen the consent letter from Mr. Hardeman, so with all that being said, I'm good with releasing the barns, Jim. Thank you.
Mr. Fowler.
I am all set. Thank you.
Mr. Delaney.
I am all set.
The chair is all set as well. We have a barn for $10,000. So, do we have a motion on the barn?
Motion to release the barn.
All right, a motion to release. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to agenda item C, 600 Wubbin Street. Modification of site plan special permit. A motion to waive the public reading. Do I move a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, before we start, I had, I'd like to ask one question after they introduce themselves.
Okay. Gentlemen, if you just state your names for the record?
Yes, Paul DiMaggio.
Just pull it over.
That better?
Yep.
Paul DiMaggio, Pepti Corporation, in Delaware Valley.
Uh, Gene Sullivan, I'm an engineer for ETS Inc.
And owner and developer of this site.
Very good. You want to ask your question, Mr. Fowler?
I just want to make sure that you received the letter from our town engineer, Mr. Hardeman.
I did and I've gone through all those items and actually corrected them all.
Terrific, that's all I have here. Thank you.
All right, so with that then, the floor is yours, gentlemen?
Yes. Good evening, Chairman, planning board, ladies and gentlemen. Hopefully, some of our neighbors are here. I hope some in support of what we're doing. As we met in the conceptual meeting, what we're trying to do is add an addition and to our building at 600 Wubbin Street. The plan that we present tonight is basically the result of several decades of working towards moving out of Lawrence, getting rid of the old machinery, manufacturing machinery we had there, replacing it with new machinery in Tewksbury. We finished it in about 2014 with the new machinery. We've pretty much covered that debt at this point and it's now a position where we really need to consolidate the operation. We've been using the Lawrence facility, 68,000 square feet for nothing but storage and offices for three of us. We'd like to move our three offices down to Tewksbury and put up 23,000 square feet because that's all we basically need. We've leased our half of the building in, in Lawrence and I will be selling that building as soon as we see which way this is, is going. So, we finished our, our capital investment down here and the sole purpose for this addition is basically warehouse and three offices. So, there's six offices in what we're doing. We're going to relocate three from the existing plant into the, an office structure and get us all together on one page. Unfortunately, 2015, unfortunate for us, the West Neighborhood Business District was enacted May of, May 4th, 2015 and that changed the zoning from heavy industry that we're in, we're in, to the West Neighborhood Business District, which cut, basically for us, cut the coverage of buildings on the lot from 35% to 15%. At the time, we were at 14.6% or somewhere near that. So, it basically precluded any additional, addition of space. It's a 10-acre parcel. It's one of the largest in the WNBD, the West Neighborhood Business District. And we have to basically ask the, the planning board in, in your site review, not only to review the, the site plans itself, but give us the, uh, special consideration that you're allowed to do. I think it was enacted in 2016 in June by the Attorney General, that you asked for permission to waive your dimensional charts for people and businesses that were affected in that West Neighborhood Business District. And so, you have to decide on, on that tonight. We are looking to go from the 15 or 14.6% coverage to about 19.6%, which is nowhere what we thought we could do when it was heavy industry, but we don't need it. And I don't think that that site is going to be, uh, needing any additions beyond this. We're going to have, the building's designed to have mezzanines for storage. We have bulky textile material and it just takes a lot of space. And what we've been doing is shuttling the material from Tewksbury to Lawrence a couple of trips a day and then shipping out of Lawrence. And what we want to avoid is the, the shuttle trips and the extra labor in Lawrence. So, our production guys can go straight from their production lines to the storage area and then out the door on a truck. The, you know, I, I go through some of the, the impacts on traffic and it's basically, we're going to have probably six, five, six additional car round trips a day for the three employees and people coming to visit us. We're going to save, what is it? We're going to save one to, two to three round trips between Lawrence and Tewksbury every day, but we'll be shipping out one to 1.4 more tractor trailers a day. There's a net decrease in truck traffic by one to 1.6 trucks a day. So, I, as far as infrastructure demands, it's little. What the addition consists of, like I say, is the 20,000, 23,000 square feet, two loading docks. We came in the, on the conceptual hearing with three loading docks, speaking more with management down there and thinking of the neighbors as, well, we don't need the three docks, we need two. One will be a live dock, one will be a storage dock where we put our waste fiber in the trailer to go out for recycling, reconversion. I realize we'll have enough space where we can store some of those things indoors now. The biggest concern to me in designing it was first of, first of all, the change in zoning, but our neighbors. I mean, we've been concerned about the neighbors from day one when we've put additions on and we've tried to stay absolutely as far away from them as possible. And I think we've done a really good job in this design. It pushed the loading docks because we will have one to 1.4 trucks closer to our neighbors by about, from one side of the building to the other, but the neighbors are on the back. And so, what I did is recessed the loading dock 70 feet into our, the footprint of our, our structure next to it, but in, so that the trucks can back in and still use the pavement we have there today to get in and out. In other words, we go no closer to the neighbors than we do today with car parking. Then the other thing is, because I look at this from a, a planning board perspective, because I've been in your position for a lot of years in town, in Atkins in New Hampshire, and I know neighbors don't want, first of all, they don't want trees cut down and I understand that, and they don't want their quietude interrupted. So, we're going to limit the operation from 8:00 AM for the trucks coming in that back area, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, five days a week. We have a ton of docks on the other part of the building. If somebody wants to come in on a, a Saturday or something, then we'll load them from another dock. And that's the biggest thing. I mean, I think we meet everything in zoning. We actually exceed in your zoning, heavy industry, heavy industrial buildings are supposed to be set back when it butts up against our 40, residential 40. They have to be 100 feet back, the building from the lot line. We're 132 feet. We're actually seven or eight times further back than we have to be in the West Neighborhood Business District. We have, at least in this design, maintained as much as we possibly could. I think we exceed everything in the town for zoning, including 50% open space on the lot. It's right around 50% that remains forest, wetlands, wildlife habitat, and it's contiguous. And it's not only contiguous, it runs to Wubbin Street and across Wubbin Street, which probably the police don't want to hear because animals run across there anyway, but we shouldn't be interfering with them. And then they have their habitat down by the, the river, which is acres and acres. The pavement is, oh, is quite a bit further back. It's 72 feet back from the, uh, lot lines of the neighbors. It's only needs to be, I think, 10 or 15 feet back. The building's 132 feet, which is 117 feet further back than it has to be in our zone. But I treated it like a heavy industrial zone, an industrial manufacturing. Those are, I don't know that you can consider us heavy. We are an industry and we do have machinery that makes noise and we've tried to contain that and I don't think that we've ever had a complaint from noise from neighbors. And we want to continue that and, and not get, get those complaints. One of the, a couple of the other things, I have spoken with the neighbors. I said I would try. I didn't do a very good job. I got ahold of several and struck out on telephone numbers on a bunch of them. But I have been in contact with at least one who had some concern on cutting down the forest and the wildlife habitat. It's a beautiful, big white pine area and I hate like hell to cut it down. But I think we, we would like to ask you, as we did before, to get a reduction in our pavement area and I feel we can save 70, maybe 100 feet more of that forest without us needing it. I mean, we don't need it. We have to follow your regulations. You require 52 parking. Well, Gene has to redo that. When the neighbor got ahold of me, I went back and checked what we gave him for figures. We told him we have 35 employees at that site and that's true, but that's over two shifts. And what you were looking for, which I didn't realize at the time, was the maximum shift. You know, what's the worst loading? And that turns out to be, I sent you, I think, 20, 25, 26? So, his calculations are wrong to begin with because he got bad data. But we'd like to try to get rid of the parking on the backside. We still have to have the fire turnaround for the fire department.
You need the microphone if you're up at the plan though.
Do you?
Or behind you.
Hello? Is it working?
Yep.
So, the, the neighbors are up here on Park Ave. Here's the 62 feet of buffer, which is over, slightly over what you require, which is 60 feet. There's another 10 feet from our stockade fence that could also be. So, there's roughly 72 feet from the lot lines to the parking. What we have currently is, Gene, tell me if, yeah, this is our current parking area. There's the lot line. We continue to follow the lot line, their lot lines down here. I would like to cut out as much of this as possible in parking. We'll put it as reserved parking. Currently, we did a count. There were 21 cars on our first shift. The first shift is pretty much solid at 26, 28 people. May go up four more people in a shift. I mean, you know, we run the, the second shift, which is right now down to about, I think, six to eight people. Could go up to 15. But we're going to ask if we can get that reserved parking from you, for their benefit, for the, the benefit of the, the animals, basically, in preserving some forest. Another thought I had, and it's probably not the time to do it, is we have a detention pond down here. Here's Wubbin Street. I want to take this fence out. I didn't realize it at the time, but you only need a fence on detention pond if you've got four feet of water. Gene, is that right?
But it's holding water. It's just a.
Yeah, our soil is so sandy, it's just disappears. I'd like to get that fence out. It's here because the, the deer and the animals run here. Our guys say the, the deer jump right over that fence. It's a four-foot fence, but the fawns, takes them a couple of tries. No sense in impeding that. And let them have their, their full range back into, you know, what remains in the forest. There's an open pond in this area that they drink at. It's a natural spring, I guess, has to be. Not on our property. And I, I hope that that would alleviate some of the problems with the concern of that neighbor. So, that, that's in, in a, in a nutshell, we want to put a warehouse, three offices, 23,000 square feet. We don't want to impact on the neighbors, but we're in a position where that's the only place we can develop the land. And I think we've taken everything into account to minimize that. The other thing is, there is a berm and a fence between us and Park Street. It's currently a six-foot fence on a three-foot berm or two-foot berm. It's about eight feet tall. And as the, the grading of the land, we'll be digging into the grading and it's basically going to be about 13 feet tall for most of the rest of the parking area, which is, I'm trying to look in here, is about the height of that white speaker, as a guess. Noise and visual barrier. Final thing is that the building itself will block direct sound transmission to four or five lots on Park Ave. All our production machinery is in the back end of the building. We've put fences up and we've planted trees and in the summer, you turn the fans on and that noise can get out. It hasn't apparently bothered anybody because I know of no formal complaints from anybody. But this building will basically be between where that machinery is as a solid barrier towards Park Ave. So, that's going to be a, a big help if there's ever any noise coming out. And besides that, I think we, we have to ask for a, uh, we, we go into the first 50 feet of the wetlands buffer with the fire turnaround and we'll have to go to the conservation for that.
We've already filed a notice of intent for that as well. We did a lot of work with the fire department, ironing out the access to the back of the addition. That's why we have the turnaround at the end of the parking lot upfront. Those things have been reviewed. The only other thing of note is, in speaking with the town engineer, a couple weeks back, he did ask us to do a, a traffic study. Wasn't really relative to Mr. DiMaggio's use of the property, but any potential user for down the road. He just wanted to have some kind of background information if the property were to be transferred and another warehouse user were to come in. We would have that for you reviewed prior to the next meeting. We are going to conservation on February 5th, I believe it is. First week in February is the meeting and then we'd expect to come back here and hopefully wrap things up with you. But we provided site lighting, photometrics, all of that information as well in the package.
And Gene, I, I haven't seen the final. Have you got lighting on the side going in or we still got?
We have full lightings. There were full cutoff visors towards the neighbor side that are lighting up our parking lot strictly for safety lighting. All the counts are in there to demonstrate nothing goes beyond the fence that's 10 feet off the parking lot.
All right, all set?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Fowler. Mr. Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While we're on lighting, I thought I, oh, yes, the last sheet in your proposal shows the lighting.
Correct.
Quick and easy question is this. You're taking care of the spillage.
Yes, that's what the numbers show, that are around the, I know you have eleven by seventeen, but the extent of those numbers are zero-foot candles, and we're still fifty feet away from the neighbors.
Okay. My only question about that is, are the lights shielded on the backside?
Yes.
So that they won't even see the light?
Correct.
Getting back to the first question I asked before we even started the hearing. Were there any questions from the town engineer that you had questions on, you couldn't handle or want to talk to him about?
I'm okay. The only thing that's significant in there, most communities or a lot of communities where we do our soil test pits, we have them done by a licensed soils evaluator, who's a P E, and we hand them in that way. They don't typically, a lot of times don't typically come observe them while we're doing them. That was the only thing or the biggest thing in there. So we can either do them again for him now during the hearing process, or we, a lot of times, we just confirm them before we do construction. Whatever he's comfortable with, I'll talk to him about that.
I guess we should ask him, Mr. Chairman, if he could converse with the town engineer with a letter.
Oh, I expect to give you a letter rec that doesn't have anything on it next time, yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Nice to have someone knows what they're doing. That's great. Thank you. I'm all set.
Mr. Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of my comments was, where we stand with all the comments from Mr. Hoddeman, you have to be satisfied because he is a...
I've made ninety percent of them already. I plan to get them back to him before we go to conservation so that he's satisfied before we go back to them.
Great. Do you have many company vehicles registered to you guys?
We have one straight truck and several passenger cars, but no semi-trailers.
Will they be registered in Tewksbury?
If they're not already, they're probably, I think we probably would have registered them Tewksbury because it's a lot cheaper than registering them in Lawrence. But I'm not sure. But yeah, they would be registered in Tewksbury.
So I see the hours of operation, you said?
Of that back-loading area, because that's what would impact the neighbors. That's about the only thing that I have fear of.
Okay. I know you said you have cars parked back there, correct?
Yes, they would be parked back there during the second shift, which can run till two o'clock. But in all honesty, since the production machinery is up front and we show parking spaces to do it, the guys literally park all around the truck docks in the front.
Okay. So you're gonna have trucks backing in that location as well, right? Trucks?
Trucks will be backing in that location, but not after hours.
This is where the two new loading docks would be.
Okay. So will the backing mechanisms from the truck affect some of the neighbors at all?
Say that again?
Will the backing mechanisms of the truck?
The alarms?
Yes.
Yeah, you would hear the alarms. I don't know how much you hear it through the forest, but yes, that would be a concern, which is why to cut it down. And like I say, it's one or two trucks a day, max. And we would want that done during non-sleeping hours unless somebody's on a second shift.
Do you have any additional signage going in for the site?
Signage, no.
Signage, no?
No. And that was another question, but we'll ask that at the end. We did put one side up front, but I think on the prints, Gene may have showed a front sketch of Delaware Valley on the building facing Woburn Park Ave. If I'm gonna spend money on a sign, I don't think they need to see it. It would be elsewhere.
We'll just need to see the sign that's going up if you're gonna change.
Yeah, we're not gonna put a sign on that end of the building.
There's a property sign on Woburn Street that they just did last year, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I gotta find out if we have to have it inspected. I don't know.
All right. So regarding the parking, you want to cut back in the back there? I mean, we need, we're gonna, you're gonna be required to have sufficient parking?
Yes.
Per regulation? Okay.
What we're really talking about is eliminating potentially this role. We need to maintain the fire access in any event.
Yeah. I mean, all in favor of keeping the forest area there, but you're gonna have to have sufficient parking.
And we have to put it in as reserve. I mean, Gene's calculations will change because he calculated the largest shift at thirty-five employees, and the largest will be twenty-six or twenty-eight on the first shift.
So we'll be getting new plans and updated versions soon, right? Okay. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
We would design the drainage to handle that parking anyways if you ever needed it.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'd probably just show it in the dotted for future if necessary.
Yeah. I mean, I'm all in favor of the expansion. You know, you're staying in Tewksbury, new jobs, new potential, you know, taxes coming in and so forth and so on. So look forward to seeing the new plans.
Mr. Zaline?
Yeah. The items that are on this list for Mr. Hoddeman, you said they're taken care of?
I will take care of them. I've done, I haven't resubmitted, but...
One of the questions is, with all the property you have, you don't have enough snow storage area?
I've identified some more areas.
I just don't understand.
Around the perimeter. We have plenty. He didn't think I drew enough on them.
Okay.
There's plenty of places to put them.
Good suggestion. You'll have all that area that you're taking the parking spaces out of if you don't need them for future snow storage?
We've identified more around the perimeters.
I guess most of these questions here, too, are gonna be answered by the conservation?
Four of them, yes. They need the answers as well, sure. Most of them are drainage related.
I'm all set. All right. Not a lot to add at this point. I mean, I'm fine if, you know, if we can cut back on the parking, you know, as a balance between what's needed when you put your new numbers together and what might save, you know, some of the trees. I mean, you know, there's a little give and take there for a good reason. Obviously, being able to maintain, and if it's necessary, deal with it in the future. I don't have a problem with that. As far as the detention out in the front, the only thing I'd say is I'd just as soon leave the fence there. I understand that the woodland creatures are having, you know, the small ones might have a little harder time, have to take a couple of tries. But I'm more concerned with the fact that you are in the strangest of areas in Tewksbury, which is a little bit of everything. There's homes, which means there's kids, which means I'm more interested in them not being able to jump over a four-foot fence than a woodland creature. Whether there's water in there or not, you know, maybe someday we have enough rain that there is. I just as soon, I don't think it's bothering anyone. I'd rather see it there for a safety, you know, absolute rather than, you know, making jumping easier.
That's why it's there.
Like I said, it's really, you know, I feel like they'll get over eventually.
Or they'll go around.
In reality, I mean, there is more land to our border and to the neighbor's property.
Yeah, and they may be jumping over it just for fun. I have no idea.
It's in a pretty remote place, so...
You know, so I, like I said, I'd just as soon leave it there as just sort of that belts and suspenders sort of thing, more for people and less for them, so. You know, beyond that, for now, I'll open up...
In honesty, the reason we put it in is because there were a lot of children, the kids in the area, and there were a lot of ATVs and dirt bikes some years ago. I mean, 2012, that was done. And, you know, they would tear it up a bit.
Let's not encourage that to start again. So with that, I will open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Would you be favored, would you just push your easel to the left? That way the podium can face us. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Peter Chase. I'm in a butter of the property here, and I've had some...
You have an address? And if you lift that mic up a little bit?
Nineteen Park Ave. So the addition isn't directly behind us, but we'd be impacted by the parking that he was referring to. So I would just encourage the board to please give all consideration to, as he mentioned, to removing those parking spots if they're not needed, as he says, because if you do go back there, it really is a wildlife sanctuary. I've got a critter cam, and it's pretty amazing, the creatures that live back there, from gray fox to owls to all sorts of... It's not a huge lot, but it's very mature. And if we could eliminate that parking lot, that would be fantastic.
So I think in comment to that, that as you're figuring out when you do your new calculations, if we could start from the back, moving up as a way of start to eliminate the spots that aren't necessary, and then we'll go from there. But if you're gonna remove spots, let's start from, you know, the back section, I think.
Yeah, we'd do that.
Just makes the most sense.
Pull that right end towards...
Pull the round in because that goes towards the neighbors. And then that whole back strip, I know the...
Twenty feet or two servants less.
And that, I mean, some of those are gonna go away because you're gonna do new calcs. That's not even us making a waiver. That's just you figuring out twenty-five people on shift and then do your math.
Thirty-five. I mean, that's ten out right there.
So, all right.
Those are all I had, and just the fact that it is, as you mentioned, it is somewhat of a wildlife corridor that goes all the way down to the Concord River and comes in behind our properties and goes out behind Meadowlands Ice Cream, if anybody's familiar with that. And it may seem trivial, but that fence is an impediment. So if you could give that some consideration, he would know better than I, but I know of no children that would be back behind that industrial area, and there's never water. Not that I would trespass, but I've been back there. I've never seen water in it.
Okay.
All right? Thank you.
Can I put an aside in, is that, and Gene will testify to it, the soil is like pure sand. I mean, it drains like that. You can't even time the...
I'm just one person. So if we get to the point where everybody feels like taking the fence out is fine, that I don't have a problem with it. Again, I was arrowing on the side of, you know, small children jumping it versus small woodland creatures. But that's fine. We'll remember what I said, and we'll have it on record.
Yeah, right.
So anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns on this at this time? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. Just as a reminder, obviously, the petitioners wouldn't necessarily know this, but we have our new process for how things will work. And just to let you know, my understanding from where we are at this point is you guys will come back at our next meeting with more information, at which point I would suspect if everything is fine, we'd be at a point where we'd be pretty much finished up with the things we need to do. Any waivers, we might be talking about granting. Our new process will be, when we feel that we're at that point, a draft decision's gonna be done. It'll go out to you guys. We'll get it. It should be a week before our follow-up meeting, at which point we'll actually vote on it. So there'll be that meeting lag in between that may not have existed in the past that will be when it would actually be voted on, to give everybody an opportunity to make sure we're all on the same page as far as waivers, requirements, whatever it might be. So we don't have any confusion, you know, going forward. So just you guys, for time-wise, just keep that in mind.
Yeah, it gives you a chance.
So to have everything squared away when you come back to your next meeting is in your best interest so that we can move to that next step. Okay?
That being said, I think we, you have two meetings a month?
Typically.
So we'd like to be to the second meeting in February so that we have a chance to get to conservation and all of that. Would you close before they do?
Well, we wouldn't close, but what I would suggest is that you'd still come to the next meeting because if you've got everything squared away, we can at least start the draft decision so that at that second meeting in February, we might be in a position to vote, rather than if you wait till then, that means that's when I'm gonna ask for the draft to be done. You won't get a vote until March. You see what I'm saying? And if it, you know, if the only outstanding issue might be conservation in that lag time between the two meetings, if it's resolved, we'd be ready to vote at the end of February, theoretically. Does that make sense? Okay. So anyone else with any other questions or comments on the board at this time?
No, good.
All right. So with that, then, so we have a motion to continue this to 7:15 on February 10th.
So moved.
All right. A motion made, do we have a second? Motion made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right. Good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Did you say the 10th of February?
Yes.
I think, I'm not gonna be here, Gene, on the 10th. I'd like being here.
Your presence isn't required if your representative has the information.
Yeah, no, he's...
Okay. All right. Moving on to agenda item D, 120 Lumber Lane, use special permit, continue from our 113 meeting. All right, gentlemen, if you just state your name for the record, the floor will be yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Plunkett, representing the applicant, 120 Lumber Lane, LOC. With me tonight is Mr. Joseph Phelan, who is the principal of the applicant entity, and Mr. Richard Cuco. Mr. Chairman, we're here for requesting special permits for the site that's located at 120 Lumber Lane. And the origin of this process is tied to the fact that there was a determination that there are some tenants at the site for which the use requires use special permit, and use special permits were not granted. Further discussion that, you know, with the town, that the determination was made that there's a possibility that some tenants may have made changes without permits within the units themselves, possibly in violation of zoning code, building code. And what we're doing now is this comprehensive issue of trying to deal with the site in total and bring it into full compliance. The building commissioner is holding off in his support for the special permit, subject to us arriving at an agreement which will have conditions to be incorporated into the decision by the board, assuming a positive decision or determination for the requested special permit for uses at the site. And we are in agreement in principle. There has been a memorandum circulated through Town Council, Attorney Zerulis, but there just hasn't been the time to come to a full conclusion relative to the exact language of the conditions to be requested to be incorporated into the determination of the planning board. Just a little bit further in the background, you know, this is, Cuco has put up the site plan for the site. And basically, this is at the end of Mr. Phelan's property on Lumber Lane. It's a very well-run site. Anyone that knows Mr. Phelan, his history in town is that anything that is done is done properly, well-maintained, well-managed. The property is located, if you look at the tax maps that were submitted with the application, if you don't have that handy, I have copies, but do you have that with the application? You want, okay.
So it was circulated back in September, when this was first on the agenda, but I have one copy of the tax map.
I keep everything, David.
I'll be honest, I don't carry this stuff around that long.
I didn't know when it was coming to the time board, so...
Fisher.
Yeah. Now you guys should have everything.
So if you look at the site, to the back is the heavy industrial area. And to the, in front of it is Mr. Phelan's other property. In front of that is the old Muro Pharmacy. To the right is the, we had the, it's the union, correct? The...
Teamsters Truck Drivers Union.
So this is a very isolated location relative to being surrounded by parcels that, you know, are not directly affected and is, in actuality, the perfect location for a heavy industrial site within the town. We came back, came before the town, the annual town meeting of 2019, and it was, the parcel was zoned to HI-1 to introduce certain other uses within the area. So basically, the application before you is that we've listed all the tenants, the all the, uh, the tenants, the uses that they have ongoing, and the uses then that we would require the use special permit, as well as identifying other uses that would require special permits under the zoning bylaws that would be very appropriate and fit into this site. And therefore, we're, we're looking for use special permits for the site rather than tenant-specific. And this was as per conversation with, uh, with the town, uh, including, uh, the, uh, planning director, uh, Ms. McGinty, and the assistant town manager, and, uh, and that, that's how this is being submitted now for use special permits that would be allowed specific to the site. In terms of the process that we're undergoing right now, Mr. Phelan has engaged Gavin and Sullivan, Mr. Jack Sullivan, which anyone, you know, I know from my time on the board, anything that Jack brought before the board, it was, okay, we know it's gonna be good. Uh, he and Dan Dunnehugh from Gavin and Sullivan are doing inventory of the buildings. Uh, and, you know, we'll look in, in that, that's part of the process we're dealing with, with the, with the town itself in this memorandum of understanding as to come into full and complete compliance of the site. But, you know, it's one of these, you know, chicken and the egg, what came first. Part of the process of getting the special permits, uh, getting the building permits is that you have to be compliant with the use special permit. And then, you know, so we're coming with the use special permit with also this tie-in to satisfy the town relative to the, to the sense that we're going to have this process to address all issues pertaining to zoning, compliance of the zoning ordinance and the building code. Uh, so i- i- it's a situation where, I, I spoke to attorneys Zerulis today, and we're gonna continue our discussion, and hopefully, we, we might be able to have an agreement before the next, uh, the, the next meeting relative to the exact language that would be satisfactory for requested to the board to be incorporated into any decision made by the board. Uh, so, you know, I, I, I think, you know, again, knowing how, uh, Mr. Phelan operates within the town, you know, this would actually probably be one of the first sites of this sort that is gonna be the prototype for this type of compliance in how it will be handled in regards to the use special permits, requirements for, you know, building permits and, and full compliance with a site of this sort, and also allowing, you know, uh, the operation in a commercially reasonable manner, which was one of the issues that we discussed when we're talking to the town in terms of, you know, when people get, come in, you know, with, you know, the approach of having the use special permits for the site, because, uh, you know, people come in, they're ready to, you know, when they, when they meet with Joe, it's like, okay, we wanna come in here, we wanna get going, we wanna move. And, you know, i- if there's a way of having it, this situation, so that the intent is that we will have it with the ability of complying by dealing with the building department relative to the, uh, the submitted to the building commissioner's office relative to each tenant, and that we will have had through the board, you know, review of the site in general and the requested uses that were, that were submitted for use special permit for the site. But bottom line is, there's still some additional work to be done that we think we're closed, we think that, you know, uh, I, I, it's, it's, would be accurate to say that we're, we have an agreement in principle, but the exact language has not been finalized.
Not to confuse the issue, is.
That was an inside voice laugh.
Not to confuse the issue, I want to look at it from the planning board's perspective. The building commissioner's job and the stuff that they're doing and, and working out all this with Attorney Zerulis, to use your words, belt-on suspenders. But basically, what we're asking the planning board to look at is, are there any uses that we've listed on here that you wouldn't expect to see in a heavy industrial building? The, the, the Tewksbury bylaws, as you know, it's a unique animal. So you have a heavy industrial district, but there's only two things you can do in that district that don't require a use special permit. So it's kinda like, you, you, if you're in a residential district and you wanna build a residential home, you don't have to come in for a fine. So this is going to be, um, as Attorney Plunkett said, this will be like, uh, a, a good roadmap for any of the projects, other projects that are out there in town. So we're asking you to look at and focus on is, are there any uses that we've delineated here that you don't think would be appropriate for this industrial site? I just kinda bring it down to ground zero.
Not that attorneys could ever be confusing, so I, I will accept that.
Don't worry, Mr. Plunkett, I'll get to it in a second. Otherwise, you guys are all set? Mr. Delaney?
I don't know where I am here. What you're trying to do is, if I'm saying, correct me if I'm saying.
Please mic back over.
Correct me if I'm saying this wrong. You've got people that have gone in and put their equipment or done whatever they've had to do. And it's a heavy industrial area. What you are trying to do is make it all so that the building department knows what can go in there and what can't go in, so you don't come here.
Oh, we, we have to come here. The first step is to come here, and we have the list of the uses. A large number of them are currently being utilized at the site as-is. And then there are some that we have set forth in the narrative letter that was submitted or resubmitted dated January seventeenth, uh, in terms of detail and other uses that would be appropriate for the site for future use. And then, in the future, basically, it'll be a matter of, uh, requiring a degree of certainty that the process would be carried out so that each, uh, you know, that, that full compliance with the zoning ordinances and any building, uh, code requirements will be, will be complied with, including the basic, I think, uh, requirement that probably a lot of people aren't aware of. And, you know, again, this would become the reference point for anyone else in the town to say, look, it can be done, is that any tenant that comes in is supposed to submit a narrative to the building department, whether it triggers a permit or it doesn't trigger a permit. And that, that was one of the, uh, uh, issues that was brought up, you know, that's, and was acknowledged that probably not a lot of people recognize that. Uh, but, you know, that, so that's gonna be part of the, you know, of our memorandum that we're discussing relative to the protocols of, uh, you know, management in the future.
But just, I'll answer your question with, just a quick example. There's a gentleman in there who does water filters. And now, through the years, he decided to make his own water filters. Well, that's manufacturing. Manufacturing requires you folks to give it as a use special permit. So he didn't realize, he says, I've been operating this business for a long time. I didn't know if I, if I took the water filter from somebody, delivered it to me, and then I delivered it to you, I'm okay. But as soon as I say, I'm gonna make this water filter, that requires a use special permit. So a lot, that's basically what we're trying to say, is that manufacturing, you would think, would be allowed in a heavy industrial zone, but in our bylaw, it requires a use special permit. So, again, those are all the different categories, auto glass, fellows, and what have you, so.
So it would actually start with the process of going in to rent the place?
Right.
In other words, it would start there?
It's a, another guy wanted to move in to do the same thing, all right? He would have, his use would be allowed by you folks, and then he'd have to go to the building department to take care of all of the stuff that he has to do with the building department. But the building commissioner's saying, your use hasn't been sanctioned by the planning board yet, so I can't even, you know, look at your building permit. So that's why, you know, this is the first step. Get all these uses, all these uses, I don't, to me, I don't think there's any use in there that you folks wouldn't, I think was appropriate for that building. But it's never been memorialized and put down on paper so that the building commissioner could do his job, knowing that you folks said that's a permitted use.
Okay, I think I'm answered, I'm all set.
Mr. Fratelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, how large is the site? I see all the square footage is there, but I don't know what means. Was it?
Nine, nine acres, a little more.
How many square foot of usage is being used and not, not all by companies now?
Seventy-five.
Oh, great. So in my opinion, I'd like to get that issue resolved for you guys. I mean, that's a, that's a plus for us, getting all the uses that you're looking for in these, these buildings done. I mean, um, keep the businesses in that particular building, staying in Tewksbury, you know, generating revenue for the town as well, so. I hope we can resolve all those issues for you and, and move forward. I mean, um, and you continue with the, you know, updating our zoning for that use there in the area and, and getting the building permits in line. So, um, so with that being said, you know, I know Mr. Phelan has a great record in town and always does run a great operation there, so whatever we can do and to help, I think, uh, I'm willing to do that, on my end, so.
Okay, thank you.
All set, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Mr. Fallow?
Well, is there's no way that the town can not put together the users under the different sublets? So that we, this doesn't have to happen every time?
Well, I, I think that is the proposed, that was the suggestion when we met, you know, with the town. And that's what we're setting forth in the narrative letter of January seventeen, two thousand and ten, that we're requesting special permits, use special permits for the site. That's consistent with the current usage by tenants that are currently there, as well as a few more that Mr. Phelan says, look, it only makes sense that these uses, which require use special permit, would be appropriate and expected in the future at this site. Therefore, if we get for the, uh, for the site, and it was agreed that that would be appropriate, to say, okay, look, this is the site. Here is HI-1, surrounded by, you know, Bali's site, the, uh, you know, the Union Trucking site, Mr. Phelan's other heavy industrial site, the old, uh, Mural Pharmacy site. What better location do you have in town for heavy industrial uses? So that's, w- we have put forth those uses that make sense, because it's there already and/or would be anticipated in the future. And then we allow us to then be able to deal with issues that have been brought up that's part of this memorandum we're dealing with, okay? Has someone done some work there? Get them to pull this, uh, building permits, you know, that we have to, you know, let's get full compliance, get the use special permits, and then that allows us to continue forward with this process of, uh, you know, full compliance with zoning ordinance and the building code.
This will, what, your question is, this, this will be the template?
Right.
That, that, what you just said, the town will use, so this will be the template.
I just don't understand why we don't have it now.
Well, hopefully, we will have it now.
I think traditionally, um, you have a single building, and somebody's making widgets. So they come in and they say, we have this building, we wanna make widgets. And you guys say, okay, you know, but we have all these industrial buildings all over town that are compartmentalized that, you know, they don't. One's got a woodworking shop, okay, guy's got a woodworking shop. Well, you make cabinets, that's manufacturing, you need a special permit, use special permit, even though the contractor is allowed, so, uh, it, it's, it's long overdue in the, in, to have a template like this for the town to make it easier. You just guys have to look at it and say, I don't see any uses in there to objection, objectionable in HI-one district.
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm sure as heck I'm gonna make mention of this at our next meeting, Mr. Cuco.
It's all, it's all.
It's only by law stuff, you know?
It's covered.
That would put it another two years.
No, that's covered in the new bylaw.
Exactly, okay, good. All set?
Okay, so I guess, I'm gonna, I'm gonna play the devil's advocate for this then. Well, we, we set it up this way, it was set up this way because wanting the extra sign-off on all those uses, otherwise, they would have all been granted as by right. And you wouldn't need the approval at all, so there's a, there's a reason for it. Or at least there was a reasoning for it. What you're arguing for here would be to upfront, give a blanket approval for all those uses, basically wiping that out. My concern would be this, you've got all these buildings, and they're doing a hundred different things, and they all fall in this category, and that might be fine. But what happens with, when all of a sudden, every one of those sites starts doing one of these things? At which point, someone might have some concern if every single building on the site is now doing auto repair. All I'm saying is, at that point, maybe someone would wonder if we wanted to give a use per, permit if everybody's doing the same thing. But once we give this blanket okay, those could all change to one thing somewhere down the line, or they stay doing multiple things and no one cares. But we don't get another bite at the apple at that point because we pre-approved all those uses.
Well, yeah, but every times, if I'm making, um, sleeping bags, and I sell, and I don't wanna make sleeping bags in there anymore, and another guy comes in and wants to make sleeping bags, he's gotta go to the building department.
Well, I don't, I don't mind allowing the same use to continue in a site, but that doesn't sound like what we're doing here. If we approve all these uses, you can start making, all of them can change to anything. So the, the sleeping bag guy now wants to do car repair. What stops him?
Let's play devil's advocate.
I was.
All right, so you're playing devil's advocate. Are there any of those uses in there that you don't think are appropriate for this site?
I'm not saying they aren't, because they shouldn't be on the list to begin with, but what I'm saying is, you might think they're not appropriate if every single building on the site is doing the same thing. Now, you're, you're original good giant building that makes widgets. Well, do we care if the next guy that comes in that makes widgets? No, of course not. But if the next guy comes in and it's Thermo Fisher, we're gonna care. We might wanna have a little looksee to see what Thermo Fisher's gonna do.
They'd have, they'd have to come back in.
Right, but what I'm saying is, if we give a blanket okay to every one of these uses.
Well, I don't like the word blanket.
If we give the approval you're asking for, you can call it whatever you want. All those uses are henceforth okayed on that site by us with no second look ever again for any of those sites when they change, because we've already said all those uses are okay, which means really, the chat should just read by right, is my point.
Yeah, uh, but I, I, I don't agree with, with that in the sense that you are looking at the site relative to the specifics of this particular site. And the description relative to the location of the parcel that, you know, if there's a scenario that there are some, uh, locations that may not be as isolated or surrounded by the type of, you know, development that this is surrounded by, uh, then you might say, well, I, I don't know that it is appropriate for that site. And that's why our proposal, our supplemental here tonight, is that, you know, that this specific site, not every site in town, not every industrial site.
Didn't you refer to this as a template?
For others to follow, sure, yeah, they'd have to come forward and do the same thing.
Sites specific every single time.
No, well, there's someone else, if, if they've got a, if they've got a residence right behi- residential areas right behind them, if they've got, if there's, if there is, if they're not with this type of situation. So, no, you, you would have the right to look at any one that comes forward, because they're gonna follow the same process, doesn't mean that they're gonna have the exact same result, that they're not gonna have the, every, every site is different. Every, every proposal is different.
Even if I grant you that we do it on a case-by-case basis, every time a new heavy industrial site comes up, fine. Even if I grant you that, I'm still back to my original comment, which is, even if I'm only looking at this one site, there are how many different buildings right now? Not buildings, but spaces right now?
Twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three.
It's okay, there's twenty-three spaces. If at some point, all twenty-three spaces are using one of these uses, no one had to come in and get the okay for that again. come in and get the okay for that again, now every single site is doing that, I'm saying, isn't it possible, maybe not this board, but a board in the future would have had questions as to whether that was a good idea to issue a permit for twenty-three spaces to be doing auto, auto repair, I just using an example, widgets, I don't care, but the point is, might someone wanted to have a second look at whether or not every single site in, within the site is doing the same thing? Is that a good thing? I don't know, but to say it upfront and just wipe it out forever is a check, makes it by right at that point.
Can we back up for a second? Think of the conversation we had a year ago about where should we want to have automotive, you mentioned the fact automotive uses, automotive uses. Two sites, this site, not Mr. Phelan's, but in that general area, in the general area around Old Boston Road, for automotive use. So you could have every condo garage in that area, it, off Old Boston Road, all doing the same thing, which is what you're saying.
You could, but what I'm saying, this is, you just said, "How big is this site?"
Nine acres.
This is nine acres.
That's under nine acres.
But also, remember too, when we've asked, when we've said, "Put some of these things in as uses," often the argument has been, "But we're gonna put them in as a needs, needs a special use permit by the planning board," that was the check when we asked people to vote for it. Not every one of these, but it's happened, that we've said, "Hey, it's not an absolute, they're not just gonna be able to do these things, they're gonna have to come in and prove to the board that these things are okay where they're asking for them." That was the check we offered in, as an argument at the time, you know, we approved those or endorsed those things. If we give this kind of a blanket okay across the board, we've taken away that check that we told people we'd have to say, "Okay, when we, when this use gets offered up, we'll have a chance to take a look at it and say, 'Yeah, it looks like it's gonna be all right there,' and sign off."
Why, then why did we then say, "This area, in the area off Old Boston Road, the only areas in town for automotive use?"
I mean, but that's...
Is that a blanket?
Right, but that's a specific area that we deemed at that time. What I'm saying is, are we gonna say that about this?
This is, that's part of the area.
No, what I'm saying is, with blanket just okaying the entire site, do all those things, and potentially you could do it in every single one of those buildings.
Yeah.
And, and there's no possibility that anybody might have a question as to whether that's a good idea, as to whether or not twenty, twenty-three, twenty-three units are all doing auto repair? Is that really what we envisioned when we said that's an area that that use might be okay? We thought twenty-three of them would be reasonable, like, without even us saying okay, except for upfront. We're saying it ahead of the time, we're never gonna see it, no one's gonna have to come in and say, "Here's how it will look, here's what we're gonna do, this is how it's not gonna impact," whatever, and it's one of the twenty-three, or it's three of the twenty-three. Isn't it possible that at some point, at ten, we start to wonder if that's enough there? Then we don't want a permit? I'm not saying it's, that I don't, I'm just saying we're not gonna have that option anymore.
I bet most of the uses down on Old Boston Road are automotive use, right now.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, is if we do what is being asked here, that's the end of it. We basically turn it into a by right on this spot, on this piece of property. Now, one of the arguments is that the owner, obviously, is someone who does the right thing, but he's not necessarily gonna be the owner forever and a day. I mean, it's technically an LLC that owns this. The LLC could exist forever, doesn't mean that, you know, the petitioner who's here is gonna be running the LLC. We grant this thing to, to the property or the property owner at this time, it goes on forever potentially, and we don't know what a future owner might do.
Well, if, if I might, Mr. Chairman, some of the, the uses, however, you know, for instance, you talk about the automotive uses, one of the issues of compliance would be with the zoning ordinance and also the building code, under the building code and also the plumbing code. Plumbing code relative to any use in which there is a car that is brought inside has to have special drainage requirements, and that's gonna be a limitation, you know, again...
I may have used this as a bad example, I don't care if we stick with widgets. I don't want it to seem like it's automotive, I have a problem, but I don't, I just use it because it was one of the ones that's...
But, but that's an example in terms of, you know, that, you know, the compliance situation will require that, you know, there's gonna be a limitation, because the, you know, the ability to have compliance with the plumbing code relative to the drainage requirements for any use that allows a vehicle inside is gonna be a limiting effect because of the cost, which is a cost, you know...
But that exists now.
Yes, and that's, that's why the...
And yet, right now, we have all these uses require a special use permit.
Well, and that's, we're asking for a use special permit for the automotive, because there is gonna be certain, you know, sites in which we're gonna then be dealing with the town relative to the plumbing code relative to the ability to have a vehicle inside the building. So there, there are other factors that are limiting factors, and, and...
They even granted that. What I'm saying is, you could modify every one of those twenty-three site units, and every one of them to use what we're just discussing could then become an automotive, if you meet the other requirements. What I'm saying is, under the current rules, the board would have the opportunity to say, "You know what? Twenty-three automotive sites on that site is more than we think is a good idea. Once we give this blanket okay, once we give this approval that's being asked for, we don't have that anymore." So yes, if you meet those other requirements, you could have twenty-three of them. What I'm saying is, there's no chance for us to look back after the fact, once we give this, to say, "Oof, I wasn't really envisioning that they were all gonna be doing whatever it is, anything on this list."
Well, I, I, I would say that, you know, there's, you know, the economic reality of the potential to have in every unit carrying out, you know, the, the reality of business, you know, that there's gonna be twenty-three, you know, units having that is probably very slim, just because that, that's not how, you know, the likelihood that Mr. Phelan's gonna have everyone with the same use at that site is, you know, isn't real, you know, isn't a high probability of occurrence. You know, I think, again, getting to the issue in terms of the site, specific to this site itself, where it's situated, the uses, whether it makes sense on this site, I mean, if, if there was something that you say, "Well, look, you know, if we wanna put a factor that says, says that if any one particularly use succeeds, you know, seventy percent of the entire site, then, you know, we'd have to come back with further," you know, but, but I, again, this is after discussion with the town in terms of, you know, the, the proposal as submitted was that, you know, it, it makes more sense to do it to the specific site, and then everyone with the site would have to justify the request that they have at their particular site based upon, you know, what the specifics of their premises, of their premises are, the specifics of their premises are. So, you know, it, it's a scenario that we're saying that, "Look, this, this makes sense," and it's not gonna be decided tonight, because we still have to, you know, or I should say that the agreement with the town is that, you know, we're still working, we have an agreement in principle, but it still has to be finalized. But, you know, and that's all I can say is, if, you know, if we can't, you know, if there's opposition to the proposal as presented, at least if we could have something with a, you know, that any type of limiting factor would not interfere with the ability to operate the site, and, you know, the town talks about, you know, being business friendly, they've got to, they've got to be business...
Because I think my biggest concern is the, the finality of it.
Yeah.
If we can figure out some sort of triggers that at least offer back up check-in points or triggers that say, just as an example, whether it, it's blanket for five years, and then you're gonna come back and get it renewed, at which point maybe, and I'm using that as an example and not an absolute number yet, but say after five years, you come back in and you have to get it renewed. If at that point, when the board that happens to be here then looks at what's now at the site, maybe they won't feel comfortable renewing the, the blanket.
Yeah.
These are the kind of, I'm not saying it's the only suggestion, I'm saying a suggestion of something that gives, that triggers something where it may open up the ability to look at it.
Can I suggest that I will have discussion with Attorney Zerulis relative to the concerns that were brought up tonight, and when you're talking, one thing that came to mind was in the passing of the board on landscaping, would retain control, saying that if we're not satisfied with the landscaping, we can call you back in.
I mean, it's sort of what I'm talking about, but I, I also don't want to screw up the business owner and have it be as sort of wishy-washy as that either, you know what I mean? If we're gonna, if you're gonna grant it, some certainty, obviously, is necessary for the business owner's part, that they don't have a business, somebody come in who wants to do whatever business, and then all of a sudden the board goes, "Hey, we'd like to see you guys," and then you come in and now it screws the whole thing up.
Yeah, I mean, the, the problem with every five years is then you have to go through the public hearing process, it's subject to appeal and everything else, and, you know, you got, you got...
Right, but there is a trade-off, because as of right now, you have to do it twenty-five, thirty, you know, twenty-five times.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, the number of units appears to be thirty-two, according to this, um...
Some of them have the same. They're different units, but they have the same user.
Yeah, so just, I'm talking about the number of units, just for the record, just so we're, you know...
I mean, the, the number isn't as important to me, twenty-three, thirty-three, that wasn't really my, my thinking, it was more...
With China, let's see if I can word this correctly, we wanna be user-friendly, all right? Somebody comes along and say, "I want, I got a vacant space, I want to move into that space." The way it is now, you lose a tenant, because you're talking a hundred and twenty days between getting the use special permit and then coming in for the building permit. So what we're saying is, these are uses that are not objectionable, they're not hazardous, they, they fit within what you'd want in a heavy industrial area. Now somebody can come in and say, "Okay, this is what I wanna do." They look at the use special permit, the building inspector looks at it and he says, "Yep, you're making widgets and you're making widget two, two widgets, you make small widgets, you make big widgets, okay, I'll give you a building permit." If he thinks it's outside of that purview, he can say, "No, you gotta go back and get checked with the planning board."
And one last point also, Mr. Chairman, and I think that part of the discussion led to the determination that the way to approach it would be site-specific, that was that looking at the language within the zoning bylaws was that it didn't appear to be tenant-specific, it appeared to be related to the site. So I, I don't know that the language per se requires that it be per tenant, it's more, you know, at a, at a specific site, so, you know, premises. So, but I, I understand what you're asking, I'll, I'll have a conversation with Attorney Zerulis relative to, to that, but, you know, relative to the site, just, you know, final restatement that if you look at this location, you know, it's, it's the perfect H-one, HI-1 site in town, and, you know, the town wants business, town wants to be competitive, we gotta try to work with the, with the landowners to, to achieve that.
Yes, to prove that we're user-friendly, Joe, I'm gonna ask you, if I may, Mr. Phelan, sorry for calling you, Joe, I always knew it was Joe. Mr. Phelan, are you on a hurry to get this done? In other words, a month, two months? You are, okay. Now I'm gonna ask the board, this was supposed to be here, we've had this for a while, this package, does everybody have that plan that shows the uses on it still?
I probably, it was, they were back here in September, I think, originally, right?
Yes, it's distributed in September in your packets.
I'm asking, does everybody have that? So when they ask us again, do, oh, look at this, that's what I was hoping for. I have mine, but it's at home.
The original Boy Scout.
Be prepared. All right. You give a, I'm gonna, that way we'll know that we can make a use, make an answer on the use.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to any of the uses on the site, I'm in favor of all those uses. It was more a question of not having the opportunity to say, "You know what, there's enough of that there now, do we really want to permit another one of X?" The other thing, you, your other statement about competitiveness, are we, are we an outlier in the way we do this?
I, I think that you are in terms of a fact that, you know, again, you know, speaking with Mr. Phelan, saying that, you know, people come in and say, "Okay, I'm ready, I wanna move in in one month, and I'm, you know, I'm ready to go, and, oh, we've got to do this, then we gotta do that, then we gotta do that, it's gonna be three or four months." People don't want to talk about three or four months down the road.
Right, but I mean, as far as having to come in and get a special use permit, that's not the case surrounding us?
No, you know, you said people say, "I'll go to Wilmington, I'll go to Barriker, I'll go to Lowell, I'll go to," you know, it's a...
That's a better argument than, than...
Isn't there a list, Mr. Chairman, of uses?
Yeah, it's on the back of this. The ones that are there now, you mean, right?
Okay.
For what's there?
There you go. Thank you. We'll be ready in two weeks.
Take a look at some other bylaws. You don't see SP as be anywhere in industrial.
And, and again, I, I don't think that what you're saying is that you're getting, doing away with special permits, because, you know, someone else isn't, when I, when I was saying the prototype, I'm not saying that, you know, someone else would come in and say, "Oh, you know, you, you did it for One Twenty Lumber Lane, so I want that exact same list."
Mr. Phelan, you know that's exactly what will happen.
No, but, but it isn't, but certainly the board has the right to say, "There's a big difference between your site and what we looked at at the presentation for the site for One Twenty Lumber Lane. This is site-specific, this is unique, every, every parcel is unique, and we're looking, asking you to look at the specifics of this site and say that this makes sense."
All right, so, don't leave yet. And open it up to the public, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns, come on.
Hello, Jonathan Ricker, Cock Path Road, off of Carter Street, the street that this comes off on. I had a few questions. I was just curious, how, how long have you owned this property?
Twenty-three years.
Twenty-three years? It's a long time you've had it. Was this, was this property, property recently rezoned?
It was, it was rezoned from one...
From HI to HI-1?
One industrial designation to another industrial designation.
Okay, at, at town meeting, and I believe it was promoted as an auto dealership.
No.
No?
No, that's another parcel.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, I had them mixed up there. But that is permitted by a special permit, right? In this area, you could have an auto dealership on your property now?
By an auto, well...
By a special permit.
No, because we're not asking for a dealership, our sales, just repair.
It's not in the list of the ones they're asking for pre-apro, pre-approval, pre-approval of.
Okay, so to just get back to some of my ignorance on specific special permit process in town, typically if I was coming to apply for a special permit, I would come to you with a site plan that says, "This is what I wanna do," right? And then the planning board would have an opportunity to review that plan for the betterment of the town, that's your role, and ask specific questions as far as public safety concerns, traffic, parking, operational hours, are those all normal special permit questions?
For a special permit, the use special permit would be looked at a little differently than a special permit, looking at it as being a little bit bigger.
We're not asking for a site plan special permit.
Right, that's why I'm, I'm just trying to explain to him the difference. In the use one, we're really just talking about a specific use being asked for, for that, not sort of the full boat that you get with a site plan special permit, in which case you're gonna go to, a lot of the things you just ticked off are gonna be things that are more in that area than this.
So for, for this special permit, let's just say, I want... So for this special permit, let's just say, I want to put a widget in my industrial-zoned property, a widget plan. I would come in and say, you would ask for what?
Well, I mean, it depends, but if you're thinking of things like traffic studies, we wouldn't be asking them for a traffic study for something like this when they come in for a use special permit on a site that already exists. These are, in this case, for this, using this as an example, if one of these units wanted to do a specific thing, and you use widgets as an example, all we're gonna do is look at that for that one unit within the site. We're not doing the whole, you know, does industrial use work in this area? It's not the full boat analysis that you're gonna get when something new, like a whole site, is being done.
So, to go back to the point that you made earlier, as far as having blanket use applied to the entire property, right? So I get 32 units, all right? I'm gonna come in, hey, I'd like to lease all your space, 75,000 square feet, I'll pay you 100 bucks a square foot, I'm gonna make my widgets.
Sign your name right here.
Exactly. Now, you, 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 and me do not have an opportunity to ask the questions about specific public safety concerns, whether it be traffic, whether it be parking, whether it be hours of operation, or any of those impacts to the surrounding community that I live in.
Mr. Chairman, there was a site plan approval in which there was parking analysis, traffic...
Yeah, I'm trying to separate the two. I think the problem is you're getting, you're overlapping several things. To say the board wouldn't have had the opportunity to do those things is inaccurate. The board would just have done them at a different time. So, in an example like this, if we were to grant with the request, basically, we'd be doing that now. If we were gonna say that all those uses that they're asking for are okay going forward, that analysis would happen now, it just wouldn't happen individually in the future. And then hours of operation, all those things would have already been dealt with. So to say that the board wouldn't have the opportunity, that's not necessarily correct. It's just the board would be saying, we're dealing with that now. And then, once we've done it, going forward, the site can do any of those things if that comes up from a prospective tenant.
Without any approval required?
Well, the approval would then have been given. You just wouldn't be giving the approval in the future.
So the approval would be given now for something that we can't ask for the specific details on? If some, let's just say there's a new...
They wouldn't be bringing it back each time?
There's a new technology that comes up. Somebody wants to move in, and they deem it that it falls underneath whatever, auto widget making. And, oh, we're approved to make widgets. We're going in, building inspector giving me my permit, put up the walls, we'll start, under the cover of darkness. Nobody has the opportunity...
Again, my questions on this are one thing. I don't want it giving the impression that in any way that I was saying that anything was going on under the cover of darkness, I'm not gonna accept saying it's going on under the cover of darkness.
Down the road.
It would be going on under the approval already issued by this board at that point.
I hear what you're saying, and I think that's a very dangerous position to put the citizens of this town in, to circumvent the process. And that's all it is, is we have a process that is in place, right? That is in the laws, the rules that we should be following. Where there's, I thought that this was a request for a special use permit, and it sounds like it's a request to circumvent the process that we have adopted in this town.
This is the process. We're here now, this is the process.
The semantics of the way you're saying it, though, if the board grants this, it has been done within the process. So it's not, they're not circumventing anything, they're asking for a go about it a different way. If the board grants it, that will be okay. It's not inappropriate, it's just simply the decision of the board.
I understand, and that's where your power lies. And what I'm trying to do is to bring the perspective of the citizens, a lot of which who I represent in my neighborhood, to have the planning board understand that there's a concern here, and that I feel that the process should be followed for individual, whatever organization or company would like to occupy that space, that they go through the process with a specific application for that special use. It's a special use, and it should be treated as such. So that's all I wanted to say. One request that I do have is that if this does not go to a vote, which I hope it does not, if we could just please be a little expeditious on continuing this. This sounded like there was a sense of urgency for this meeting, but yet, this had been continued and continued and continued. And me personally, I work, I have to go to these meetings in other towns, and to find a representative from my neighborhood to come up here and voice our concerns, there's another concern with the intersection between the end of Lumber Lane and Carter Street that a senior citizen on Ellington had asked me to come and address. If you're gonna make the appointment, come to it. We'll make sure that somebody's here to make sure that the citizens are heard and that the process is properly questioned and properly approved or disapproved. So, I appreciate you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else with any other questions, comments, or concerns at this time? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. So, any other questions or comments from the board at this time?
All set. Motion to continue, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so we have a motion to continue to 7:20 on February 10th, 2020. Do I have a second?
You said that was 2:10?
What was, it was Vinnie's motion?
To February 10th.
February 10th.
Doesn't have time, Mr. Plunkett?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So do I have a second to continue? Oh, motion made second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item E, 1037 North Street, oh, you know, sorry, 1037 North Street, 1547 Andover Street et al. The request from the applicant to continue to the February 10th meeting, already on here for 7:10. So do I have a motion?
All bow, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second? Motion made second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
All right.
All those opposed, motion carries. Brings us to agenda item F, 135 Pleasant Street, that's the elementary school. Site plan special permit continued from our 113 meeting.
Mr. Collins?
Gentlemen, if you'll just state names for the record, the floor is yours.
Certainly, thank you. Peter Collins, CBRE.
Sam Basta, landscape architect, CSS.
David Conway, civil engineer, ditch engineer.
Bill Beatrice, Flansburgh Architects, architect.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. We're back here this evening to continue the discussion regarding the elementary school project at 135 Pleasant Street, for any questions that the board may have or the public, and just to provide some quick updates from the design team, which are several members here this evening, from the design architect and the subconsultants. With respect to the town engineer, we did meet with the town engineer last week. We had several back-and-forth discussions from the town engineer's office and the conservation commission's office. And we plan to meet with them again this Thursday as well to continue our discussions with some of the questions they had. So with respect to this evening, I can turn it over to Bill from the design team, Flansburgh Architects, for him and his consultants to share any information.
Sure, there's, as Peter mentioned, we've been in contact with the DPW, working with the town engineer. We don't have a real, we're not presenting an update on the design, it's just we're continuing to work through the process, I'd say. So, again, we're here just to hear any sort of questions or field any questions.
All right, we'll start with Mr. Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you gave us a design here for snow storage, right?
Yes.
So those, the plan is, we'll cover enough square footage for this design and so forth to remove the snow accordingly?
Yes, we're working through that with the DPW. I'm not sure what plan you have in...
C301?
Yep, that's the most current. We had submitted a snow storage plan, they wanted an update on it, they wanted some calculations made on potential volumes of snow storage.
So this is a draft, like it says, right? Not a final plan, it could be updated and changed, so forth and so on, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And actually, one of the comments that we received early for the conservation was just for us to tweak one of the areas, to move it farther away from the resource areas.
Okay, right. The only other comment is that our last meeting, we were discussing traffic, you know, and we had privy to all the information and actually the traffic study. But I had to pull it out of the traffic engineer, the numbers for us, so that the general public was aware of some of the, you know, ins and outs of traffic back and forth. So, you know, not that there's nothing wrong with that, but I think we need that information public, so the people that are listening to this and in the audience and watching on TV later are aware of those numbers, not just for us, but for them, so everything is kept transparent. And I know you used the ITA figures, correct, right? So, I mean, and I have all the confidence in the world that those figures will hold up correctly. And, like you said, the biggest question is the big loop that everyone's talking about, so... But with that information, I think that's great that people are aware of the fact that that's where those numbers came from, and that we'll circumvent any problems, hopefully, in the future. So if we can just keep that ongoing, it's great, that's all.
And that's fine, and I'll just add, I'm with the understanding the town engineer's office has hired a traffic consultant as a peer review as well to just validate the designer's intent and designs, practices.
Good. Thank you very much. All set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Delaney?
A question came up, I think at the meeting or even after the meeting, the board members are talking about it. How many, I'm talking about coming in and waiting to unload the kids at the place. How many cars will back up when they're exiting, after they pick up their child? After the children are picked up? When they get to the front, I know you're gonna go left and you're gonna go right. How many cars approximately do you think will be leaving that unloading area? In other words...
I thought it was like seven and three J or something, or seven and four or something.
No, I'm talking about, when they come in to pick up their child and they go to leave. Is it possible for that, those cars, because of the traffic on Pleasant Street, for those areas to be backed up?
So, Nick Havon from ditch engineer, who's a transportation engineer, is, I think, going through the report. I think that's something you spoke of, that we could definitely talk about next time. We have all these big reports, but we can bring some of the more pertinent information a little bit forward. It's a handful of cars that are queued back into the site when they're leaving. I know Nick talked about it last time, I want to say it was, I don't even want to say, but it didn't seem to be significant. We can make sure we have it if he can't find it in the next...
Okay, because I know that the loop that goes around the school, you know, there's room, I think somebody said to me, 365, like 365 cars can get into that driveway.
And is this worst-case scenario?
So, the worst case we have are 61 feet. That means, translate about four cars. They're gonna be queued up to leave there.
So, the thing is, if there's traffic on Pleasant Street where the cars cannot exit out onto Pleasant Street...
I understand.
It doesn't take much to back it up into the school driveway.
So that analysis is done, taking into account the traffic on Pleasant Street and the available gaps for the cars to leave? So it's kind of like a calculus of these cars lining up to leave and the available gaps. And Nick's analysis, which is being peer-reviewed, shows there's approximately four or five cars that get queued up trying to leave the site at the most conservative time, right?
So the thing is, if those five cars can't get out, the cars that are up in the driveway getting ready to pick up their kids, is there a possibility for that to back up and slow down?
The distance isn't enough for the impact that the folks behind?
Correct. The worst-case scenario shows 61 feet of queue space occupied, and that's a moving mechanic.
And I think maybe next time, what we can do is, we can bring just a little graphic to show you what 61 or 72 feet of queue space means, so that it doesn't cut off the next driveway in the site or preclude someone from doing anything.
You know, originally, I was worried about the cars coming in. There's enough room to fit a lot of cars coming into the site. But the cars leaving the site, I mean, the traffic on Pleasant Street at that particular time, it, you know, it wouldn't take much for those cars to get held up and for the cars to back up, back into the driveway, to prevent other cars from... So we're gonna be backed up all day, at least they're backed up inside the yard, inside the property, if they're gonna back up.
And that length of 61 feet that I just mentioned, that's for the cars entering Pleasant Street taking a left on Pleasant Street. There's only five, the analysis shows five feet for the cars taking a right on Pleasant Street.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fall?
Oh, boy. My cheer was, when you said a graph, I went, yay, touchdown! And that's not being coy. When we have plans coming before us for the simplest McDonald's, Burger King, Wendy's, whatever, they all have a drive-up, and they all have escape lanes, and they all have a plan that shows how many cars can go from the order window to the street, and from the pickup window to the order window, and then how far away they are to exit again. So making sure that we don't have a conflict, not a conflagration, but a...
Conflict.
A what?
Conflict, I think, is it?
A conflict, thank you, yes. A conflict of people trying to go different places at once. If you can just show us, and I asked this before, give us the lanes. There's straight, you know, there's no straight lanes coming out of the driveways. It's either a left or a right, but there's a lane left or right going out, and there's a lane coming in. So that's three lanes, right? There seemed to be a disagreement about that before. Are there three lanes coming in the driveway, at the driveway entrance?
One lane coming in.
One lane coming in.
Two lanes leaving.
Thank you. Yeah, that's true.
My hesitation is my cold.
No, 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 that's fine. I, for one, and I hope I'm speaking for everybody here, would like to see a plan of how you, for the Ryan School, and how you for the not-named school, is going to be, you're gonna use what you have on the ground for driveways for the pickup, not the buses, but for the automobiles. Because you know what's happening, you know, the school gets out at 10 past 2, at 1:30, they're jockeying for first road position. So, we need something on paper, if we can. All right, is that doable?
Yeah, I, sir.
Thank you. That's all, that's all I have. I'm sorry you had to stay here two hours for all of that.
Just to, but to read Mr. Fall's end, because I think this was gonna solve a lot of problems. We get, we keep getting a sheet that looks like this, which is fine, but yet to have one that's showing the queue up. Like, I mean, like he said, when we've done coffee shops, we always get one that shows us the four, five, or six cars that are gonna back up in the expected queue. So, in the morning, when the cars are trying to leave for the Ryan School and the school that shall be named, can you show how many cars approximately back up and queue up to leave in the morning in the left and right lane generally, for the two times? And then the same thing again in the afternoon, about how many cars will queue up going out at the end, you know, in the end of the day when the two schools let out separately, obviously. I know you did your calculations as if both schools... I know you did your calculations as if both schools were coming in and leaving at the same time, but that's not reality. You can show it if you want, as if both schools are going on, which would be your worst-case scenario, and if you wanna tag it that way, that's fine. But I think everybody would like to see all those versions. There, there can be the worst-case scenario version, and then reality, which is, there might only be four cars because when the Ryan comes in and when the other school comes in, but you said eight, because that's the worst-case scenario. That's as if both schools opened at the same time and let out at the same time, because that's how you ran your calcs. That's fine, but give us, give us what it really looks like, because it's not just, as Mr. Vitale pointed out, it's not just for us. And we can kinda figure these things out as we go along, but everybody in the audience can. We've got people who watch it on TV and watch it days after, if they're so inclined to be that bored, I suppose, but they'll watch our meeting day, days after. You know, they weren't here, they weren't able to ask the questions, but they need to at least be kept generally, clearly in the loop of what's going on without having to have us explain it if they run into us at the grocery store or something, you know? So I think those things, because once those things are here, you know, if you've got it up and they zoom in on it, they can freeze their TV and look at it, you know what I mean? And those things are, you know, and plus we have them, obviously, at the town if someone wants to come get them. But once you've created them, they're in the record, and then people can at least see what you might be saying to us, but see it on paper, which I think will solve a lot of problems even for us, but even more so maybe for, you know, the, the regular citizen who's just trying to follow along as we go. I think it will clear up a lot of what we've talked about. And then my only other question on that exit, I know Mr. Fall got the clarification last time, that there were two, there are gonna be two lanes, an ability to go left and right at the same time. Does that extend all the way back and for our purposes here, where you see the pink for snow? Is it that wide all the way back that far?
The whole loop is twenty-four feet wide.
Okay, so when people are picking up their kids and they leave that initial pickup area, as soon as they come out of that pickup area, there's room for them to go to the left to get in the left or right to get in the right and go from there? Okay, that's fine.
That's great.
So that's good. You know, I think the only other one on this, and I don't think I said it before, but I'm looking at it now as we discussed it, that middle lane of parking, where the drop-off is for, I guess would be the new school more specifically, do you see what I'm talking about? So that lane right there, see, in the middle?
Yes.
The parking lane in the middle? My only concern is, and I know this is gonna, sort of, to Mr. Delaney's point of, it's gonna require some onsite dealing with, is that people don't, you know, try to jump the line and then drop their kids off in the middle of that aisle and then make them cross over to get into school because they don't wanna wait. There's gotta be a way to make sure people aren't coming into that lane, whether it's pickup or drop-off, to try and jump the lane, because then you're gonna end up with a whole different problem out here at the end when they come out, and then they're trying to get around that curve and out to, you know, whatever lane they wanna go to. So that's something for the, to be dealt with internally, I'm not sure it's, you know, we're gonna see it on the plan necessarily. I don't know if there's any way for you to prevent that.
Right.
But it is something that I think people need to be aware of, is a, a real-life problem as opposed to a 2D problem, you know, on here. Yes.
I understand what you're saying, but I would rather it be solved here, so that when the plan leaves here, signed, sealed, and delivered, they deliver a school, that the, who's ever out in the parking lot doesn't have to make a decision then how they're gonna do it. So arrows on the ground, cars go follow the arrows. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, or perhaps you could put a sign of saying, no drop-off or something to that extent in that middle lane, could be added something as simple as that.
Or even drop-off only and to the right, you know, something accomplishing the same thing. I understand, much like Mr. Delaney pointed out, we can't, we can't regulate bad actors completely, but we can anticipate them, that way there's no, oh, I didn't know. Well, the signs clearly told you what to do. You chose to ignore them, now we'll deal with that however that gets dealt with. But at least at that point, there's no question is, it's been made very clear, this is not a drop-off lane, that is, if you go in here, you've done so knowingly, and, you know, however that's dealt with, it's dealt with. But, you know, every effort's been made on the part of the school, and in this case, us, to try to avoid the bad actors from playing dumb.
I mean, we could easily add a few more sign, directional signage on the site, that wouldn't be an issue.
I agree, and fair comment, very good comment. And that was discussed during earlier design discussions with the school department, particularly their operations and the transportation director regarding what you just described, Mr. Chairman. Your exact scenario was actually mapped out, and the school departments indicated that they would have staffing out there, and we would put up some additional signage, whether it be temporary, call it folding sandwich board signs that we could put in and put out during drop-off and pickup times.
Yeah, I mean, I think the high school uses something similar.
Exactly right, exactly right, so.
And I think, I assume that that's, that hook there at the end was made, at least partly to deter that too, because that's a very inconvenient turn to turn, you know what I mean? Like, only someone who's just leaving after work would be navigating that with no care.
That's correct.
Whereas someone who is purposely trying to be in a hurry is gonna find that very difficult to sort of navigate and then get out into the line of cars. So I, I think that'll help, like I said, just thinking ahead to those who might try to jump the line. I think, Mr. Delaney?
Yeah, it's also, you know, I've been involved with some of these things before. We have a school teacher that's gonna be out in the parking lot, a mother that's late for work dropping off her child, is not gonna pay too much attention to a school teacher. You know, the only thing I've ever seen, I've been involved with pickup, drop-offs, or whatever, the only thing they listen, people listen to is a man in a police uniform. Okay? So the thing is, I think when I ask these questions for even the loading and unloading, mothers or fathers are late for work, they're gonna try to get through quick, they don't pay attention a lot of times to a school teacher or, you know, if they'll run you over. I've, I've even seen cars being, you know, the blue lights on the police car, and he's trying to help somebody move a car, and they don't give a shit about him either. You know, so this is, I think this is the biggest reason or the biggest concern that I have, is in this area here, the monitoring of it, are they gonna pay attention? And what's the deal if Mars late and she doesn't wanna pay attention? Okay, those are the questions. I mean, the question that I've asked since this all started was the long driveway and the cars coming in. Okay, so now we've got the traffic off of Pleasant Street, and I'm repeating myself. We got the traffic off of Pleasant Street, but now we got the traffic going back onto Pleasant Street. And the traffic on that road, you know, Whipple Road now is called Route thirty-eight A. I think we have more traffic on, on Whipple Road coming up, coming up all the, GPS was an awful thing because it gave all the, the roads for people to avoid the lights and so forth. So that's where my, and what you're saying is, to show a map of how the loading and unloading is gonna go, and the cars backing up, whatever, and how we're gonna handle it. And I, I'm all set, I don't wanna just keep repeating myself.
It's good.
All right, with that, I'll...
I just have one question, Mr. Chairman.
Todd?
From the drop-off location to that corner, how many cars can queue up in that location?
By the corner, you mean all the way around?
Well, the first corner near the parking lot, parking area.
Like when you come in?
No, when, when you're leaving? When you're leaving here?
Sixty.
Rather than going into the parking area here, coming out, right? Through the drop-off area is, right? Here?
Yep.
How, how, how much of a space is it around the corner?
This drop-off is, happens here.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah, from here to here. So they're coming around and dropping off and then leaving, right? So, I mean, how many cars could queue up here? Would it be worth someone pulling in here rather than just waiting in line?
Well, I think that's what, that's what Chairman was saying, that someone may jump, may not wanna wait, may not wanna make that turn and cut through that line and drop off somewhere.
But if it's only a couple of cars, it may not be worth their while to even try to do that, so. Footage-wise, I don't even know how many cars will be backed up into the corner.
Perhaps, I mean, I don't know off the top of my, I don't know off the top of my head how long that area is. I did, I did bring this just in case we were gonna talk about it, so, there it was. So we're really talking about, from, and Sam, I think I'm gonna kinda put you on the spot here. So the length from, say, about here to here?
Yeah.
That's the question.
Offhand, I, I, I don't have that knowledge.
Next meeting is fine, that's fine.
That's fine.
Measuring off the scale on the bottom, you could get an approximate number.
Do it again, the lighting estimate, just your finger, from here to where, where to where?
From there?
Yeah, it's about a hundred and fifty.
To there.
About a hundred and fifty feet, that's more like almost two hundred feet, because it's more away than here.
Yeah.
So that's ten.
We'll give you, we'll give you a real.
So anywhere between eight to ten cars.
Thank you. Anyone else, or anyone with any questions, comments, or concerns?
Hi, Phyllis Giblin, eleven Monroe Circle. I'm gonna keep to the topic.
Thank you to do so, thank you.
Based on the traffic, I, I did have a question. I've gone to a lot of the meetings, and in particular, they were talking about the school committee meeting, the school building committee meeting. And they were talking about how they were doing outreach sessions to let the teachers and the parents community know about what's going on and the transition time and all that type. And I'd asked the question, are you going to discuss the plan about going around the circle and the loop that the parents are going to need to do in order to make this happen? And at that time, which is at least a month or so ago, they said, no, we are not gonna be presenting that. So my question is, has that been communicated to the, the school teachers and the parents or whoever came to the outreach sessions, the plan to have people go all the way around the loop before they can leave their kids off? Was that ever communicated?
Yes, it was. We had a meeting with, well, the school department through the school superintendent's office, scheduled a community, Ryan School community meeting back in November, and we discussed this plan and the queuing of traffic proposed when the project is completed. The majority of the discussion at that meeting was predominantly about the site logistics during construction phasing, what to expect over the next two to three years while construction is underway. But this, these drawings have been available, and they have been presented to the school department, and I'm quite certain the school department has also shared them with the school community as well, by, by way of the general public.
So, so it is clear to the community that they're gonna be expected to get in line and go all the way around the loop? That's what I want, that's what my question is.
I can certainly speak from what we are presenting and what we, ourselves, the OPM, the design team, have been presenting to the community, to the building committee throughout the course of this project, that has been our message. I can't speak for the school department or the superintendent's office.
Right, and I'm talking, I understand that about the building committee, it's been crystal clear in there, but I'm, in particular, it's about those outreach sessions to the community, because that's always been a question based on what everybody's saying here, too. People are not gonna do that about, there's this, yes, this, it can hold like two hundred cars or whatever it is, all the way around the loop to get them off of Pleasant Street. And it's like, you know, just based on what everybody's saying here, people are in a hurry, they wanna leave a kid off and on, and I have to go all the way around and people are waiting because they're getting offloaded off of Pleasant Street? Has that plan, and not, not to the school committee, I understand that, but when I did ask the superintendent at that time, that one time, so I don't know what's happened between, among all the other, however many outreach sessions are happening, has that been discussed?
Yes.
All right.
Ma'am, to answer one of your questions, I've been to a number of the early meetings for the school, and it was always, always discussed by this staff and the general public that that loop has always been in play to alleviate the parking that's now a problem on Pleasant Street. So this, I mean, I don't think it's nothing new, I think it's always been, you know, and if people aren't aware of that now, it's their own negligence for not getting involved, because that's always been the case as far as alleviating the parking problems on Pleasant Street.
Well, not, not parking, but I mean, it's...
I mean, the parking, the backing up.
Waiting in line.
Yeah, that's always been, that loop's always been in play as far as the plan, so.
All right. And there was also one time, and I think it was in one of the meetings too, is there any consideration of a need for a traffic light there during those times when they're letting kids off or exiting at when the kids are done with school?
No.
No, so there doesn't seem to be a need for that?
No.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Mann, six Monroe Circle. I had a, my own question, as the issue with the floodplain, been resolved yet?
We've submitted all the information that the FEMA has asked for, and we're waiting to hear back from them, just with the final confirmation is all we expect. I asked today, there's, it's not, it's not, it's not really a process that we can push, there's no number to call, there's no email to push along, but we expect the, the letter shortly, we have everything that they could have asked for.
Well, the only thing I can say is then, why was it several months ago, probably three months ago, it was said two weeks? You should've said three weeks, four weeks, or several months, and then everybody, I would say, okay, well, we'll wait until it happens, but we were told two weeks, and now it's three months later and we still haven't seen, seen anything. I'm just wondering whether there is a problem and you are, you know, trying to resolve it, and you just don't wanna admit that there's a problem with this thing?
No, I mean, we could, we could, we could submit everything we've submitted, all the correspondence, I mean, it's fairly open.
The last, at the last meeting, when I brought this issue up, it was said that DEP was looking into replicated lands, and you had said that, oh, I'm, I've been dealing with replicated lands, you know, with the DEP. Is that some sort of issue with this floodplain?
Not that we're aware of, no. There's no issues that we're aware of. It's certainly in the hands of FEMA and certainly in the hands of DEP and the conservation office. All information has been transparent and submitted through, and the conservation office is also having a peer review done as well.
Okay. Last meeting, it was stated that a number of drains would no longer be made on the site because of rocks. So I'd like to know how many drains were there and how many drains are you not putting in because of rocky soil?
We don't quite recall that.
I absolutely, I absolutely remember that. Whether, whether it was...
You sure it was in here?
Huh?
You sure it was in our meeting?
It was definitely in your meeting.
Does anything recall?
It was, it was stated by this gentleman right here, he said, he had said that, oh, we're not gonna be able to put in a couple of drains or, or several drains, and he said, because of rocks.
My recollection, sir, is that the discussion came up that they were going to revise their drainage plans, and they didn't need as many as they had proposed, but what they, what they have is sufficient to have the water be dispersed properly. That was...
How many, how many drains are they removing then?
I, I don't know the actual number, but I think they were...
So, so just, just for the refresher, it was, it had stated that the infiltration systems have been added, and there will now be a rain garden instead of an infiltration system near the practice field, that was in the record.
And previously, previous plan showed ten infiltration systems. We now have seven infiltration systems, but they're larger. And the infiltration systems are, consist of, of stone and pipe or chambers, so maybe that was where the rocks...
So from ten to seven, so we kind of changed them, right?
Yeah, but they're...
Bit larger.
A bit larger, just economies of scale sometimes.
And that was just... Now, it's just.
You got to come up with a mic because that, it's got to be picked up. And just state your name for the record too.
Sure, Bill Marf, from Engineering. I also performed a, a number of test pits on the site and it was all sandy material now there, which would just enhance the system for dispersion of water.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, we're talking subsurface detention basins, not necessarily catch basins that are on the surface. Just for, when the word drain is used, it's, it's rather a broad term. That's all.
My main concern is that when this site was proposed, because they were losing so much open area where it was just natural dirt. Most of, the entire football field is natural dirt, the practice field's all. Now you're putting a footprint of a school and parking lots and a road all the way around. You're losing all that filtration in. And when I brought this up, they said, oh, we're putting in all these drains and it will take care of everything. Now I hearing that they're taking three out when they originally had 10. Now they're stating that it will work, but.
Right, but remember too though, that any time they make a change to those kind of things, they have to submit it to the town and the town engineer is going to look at it and sign off on the fact that they submitted the calculations correctly. So it's, it's not like they just willy nilly get to change how many, you know, we use drains for our purposes right now, but drains, and then that's the end of it. Obviously, it's going to have to go through and get signed off on that if 10 becomes seven, that the seven, if they happen to be larger, are doing what they need to do in order to accommodate the drainage. So, I mean, if that's your question.
Okay, I understand that now. And so has the town engineer signed off on this change?
The project is still under review with the town engineer. As we mentioned at the onset of the meeting, we had a meeting with the town engineer last Thursday. We have another one scheduled for this Thursday. So no, it's, it's still under review. It's still in progress.
In progress, okay, very good. I don't know, I'm using this meeting a little bit because I can't get to the elementary school building committee. I understand that the, the athletic field is delayed by one year.
We're still talking about the schedule now. We're not confirmed, that's not confirmed, no.
Okay, because I got this information that it was, as a matter of fact, I just heard it from somebody from the town, the news person from the town crier, that it had been delayed a year. Okay, I also understood from secondhand information that the upper practice field, there's problems with that and there's possibility that that won't be done because of the fact that the ground's too rocky and there's other problems up in the, up in that area too now?
That's not true, no.
Okay. I got a question about your, now that you were talking about your loop here and everything like that. I'd like to know, in what way do the, the buses come in? When, when they're, when everybody's letting out, do they come in this way or do they come in this way? Because otherwise, what you've got, yes, you have a, a right and a left here, but you also have now buses doing the same thing, going right or left.
Your pen is where they come in. Because you haven't changed the loop for the buses, right?
No, but where are, they coming in, down here?
Nope, where you had your pen the first time.
They're coming in here.
They come in there and exit at the other end.
Okay, and exit down here. Okay, so you're going to have them going right or left down here and then these people up here going right or left. Okay, so that's a better solution than what I had thought was going to happen here. But you're still going to
They're just yellow boxes, so they don't really give you.
They're on the front or the back, sorry.
Yeah, but you're still going to have additional traffic coming in and out of here, not just this traffic coming, not just cars coming out, but you're going to have these buses turning both ways too. And I guess that's it. So thank you for your courtesy.
Thank you.
Anyone else with any other questions, comments, or concerns at this time? Seeing none? Anyone else on the board with anything they want to follow up on? All right, gentlemen.
Thank you very much for your comments and the review thoughts. We will certainly, we took the notes tonight. We will certainly provide additional information to include the graphics and some additional information for the next meeting.
All right, so then we'll put you on for the next meeting. So do I have a motion to continue this to 7:25 on February 10?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll see you next time. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And as you know, that's only on paper.
Makes sense. I mean, they're scheduled for 7:25.
Make a motion for adjournment.
If you have a lot of items, that's fine.
To get going on the hearings, you mean?
Yeah.
All right, so moving on to old business. Any old business anyone needs to discuss? Seeing none. Any new business anyone wishes to discuss? Seeing none. Correspondence? Uh, let's see, we have an email from Mr. Sadwick and an email from Mass DOT. Does anybody have anything on either of those that they need to?
Yes. You know, the, the question about the sign going out of the gas station. It appears that you're asking me if we can do it. It's on the plan that we signed when they did that gas station for the no left turn out of that driveway. And they, I'm not sure if I said that correctly to you, but it's on the plan. So it's not something we, we're asking if we can do it. They were supposed to do it.
Yeah, so I, I sent her two emails. I did clarify that on a second email and the attachment that we, it was on the original plan. I'm not seeing it, but it was advised to me by the town engineer to chuck in with Mass DOT about this left hand turn.
Well, I thought they said before that that was a good, good thing not to do that, the left turn out of there, because that's right across the, the lanes that the people are queuing on, on Main Street, right in front of the gas station. That's why we didn't want to have them do it.
That was when prior, when you originally approved the plan.
Yeah, this goes back. I don't know what DOT, I mean, I don't know what DOT has to do with us telling them they can't do something internally on the site. We're telling them from inside the site, they can't go off and go left.
That's right.
Not that you can't take a left from 38 or wherever into someplace. That's DOT. But if we tell them they can't have somebody exit on that side of their, their lot.
It was on the plan.
That's up to us. I don't know why DOT would have anything to do with it at all.
No, it was on the plan, so.
Yes, it was more of a notification to Mass DOT.
Yeah. I don't, with all due respect to Mr. Hardeman, it feels like he's involving himself again in our things when I don't know what DOT, I don't, why, why do we want DOT to be involved in the fact that we've already told them, we don't want people, we've already said, we've already cited something there with the provision that they don't go off and take a left?
Well, in the original plan, Mr. Chairman, it didn't specifically say a no left hand turn in the plan. It had referenced the plan, but it said, it wasn't specifically a no left hand turn as a language of it.
Did it say no exit or some?
It was something to that extent.
This predates me, but you guys did this before I got here, but yeah, I'm using
It wasn't that explicit language.
Okay, because I'm using like the one on Main Street, that one at the corner of Shaw Sheen and 38 is my example. We told them that that one on 38 is in only. There is no out from over there. You don't go out and go across.
That's the same as this one.
Yeah, so.
You could take a right turn out of that driveway.
Correct, but only the other one, not that first one. The first one's in only. And we did that on purpose.
Yeah, right.
So.
Yeah, and on the entrance only in the plan, it's, there's supposed to be two, when you're facing Main Street, there's supposed to be two signs saying, do not enter, meaning don't go out to Main Street. Those signs are not there at the site right now. So those need to be put back.
Oh, do not exit.
Do not exit.
You know, I'm going to tell you, they've never been and we sent them letters upon letters, get that done.
What gas station are we talking about?
So it's the one on Main Street.
Pike and Main.
Near
Pike and Main.
Yeah.
We've done work on the lights, light no signs.
All right, anything else on the correspondence? Town planners report?
There's none, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so with that, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye. All who oppose, motion carries. Thank you and good evening.